Abbreviated version. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen here in the interest of time. Oh, it looks like you have to make me a host to be able to share.
You wanna, are you able to do that?
Oh, I can share.
I just did that. Thanks.
Sweet. One sec here. Alrighty. Alright, can everyone see my screen? Okay?
Yep.
Welcome, everyone. I'm excited to lead this session into the back, actually. Last year, I had the cool opportunity and Action Tank, Hillary and Ywana invited me to present on a similar topic with former colleague of mine on the case study that I'll be showing you guys today. This will be a little bit of a different approach, so bear with me, as this is the first time I've sort of mixed this up. And taken the focus from just the policy and the case study to focusing on like the cooperation and negotiation process. Let's see if I can keep these suspended. Yeah, the name of the session, you know, is getting to yes. Let's get right into it. So what we'll discuss today is really in the backdrop of sort of a lot of conflict in politics, right? Like, we all see crazy headlines every day. You know, we see politicians making large statements, doing a lot of things, but I think amid all that, sometimes we forget how policy actually comes to be and how it gets shaped. And really, I hope that the session can kind of close that gap a little bit and shine some, just some practical insight into how policy really is formed. Like I mentioned, we're gonna use a case study, the Cincinnati Salary History Ordinance, which I have the privilege of being a part of and help shaping and ultimately passing to really highlight how legislators and their staff particularly engage a wide range of people and organizations throughout the policymaking process in order to shape what we hope is fair, effective, and informed policy. We're not always successful in doing that, but that is the goal. Here's a little bit about me, but you already got my bio, so I will move through this. So, the case study we're looking at. It was an interesting idea when it first came to us. And I think most people heard about it just through the news. And the city council in Cincinnati passed this law called the Salary History Ban, or as some people know it, the Salary History Ordinance. Really, the goal of the legislation, which passed in March of 2019, was to ban private employers and public employers, really any employer, from asking you how much you were paid in a previous job. So, any person, I think, who has done an online job application has seen the question on their application at some point of like, how much did you get paid in a prior job? And everyone always got stumped on like, what to say, right? Because you don't wanna lie and say that you were paid more. But if you have been in a job and were chronically underpaid for a while, you also don't want that low pay to follow you to another job. So, the issue at hand was how do we address this, right? Like disproportionately impacted women, people of color, young people who were recently graduated from college. Yeah. And I think in a broader sense, you know, cities like Cincinnati struggle to retain talent anyway. So when we were faced with this problem of seeing wages declining, people not moving to Cincinnati because pay was maybe not as competitive or our policies were not as progressive as some other cities. You know, the objective was to kind of reverse that a bit, or at least make a little bit of progress in that space. Ultimately, we did. We pulled it off. But I think there's a lot to be said about how we got there, and I hope that we can kind of shed some light on that process that is tracking today. Alright, I'm gonna kick it over to you guys with this one, actually, to get everyone engaged. Where do policy ideas come from? What do you think? There's not really a wrong answer here, so feel free to either unmute yourself or drop it in chat. What do you think?
Alright, I think policy ideas come from the people.
I love it.
The people elect someone who is gonna represent them. So, policy ideas come from the people. Ultimately, because, you know, when you come up with a policy idea, they're looking to use for you to represent them, and if they see you have a policy idea that does not represent the people, then they will not back you.
That's one hundred percent true.
Come from.
Yep. I can't see the chat, Hillary and Ywana, but any others in the chat?
Yeah, we've got some stuff, we've got a lot.
We can take a few.
Yeah, I said constituent concerns. We've got lawmakers, citizens, activist citizens.
Yeah.
People who are negatively affected by current policies. Representatives getting ideas from citizens or from reading about what is happening in other cities or identified problems.
Love it. And I'm sure there are so many other good ones in there. But I'll throw a few out there. You know, there's really no wrong answer. Those are all correct. Some others you maybe didn't think of, but like nonprofits and social service organizations play a big role in bringing policy ideas to government. Advocacy groups, such as PACs, activists, like some folks mentioned, think tanks and others. Colleges and universities, which I don't think people often count. And they actually sort of lead the charge in coming up with a lot of good policy. Someone has to research it, right, and publish peer-reviewed research. Political parties, for better or for worse. Conferences and events, there are a lot of like good policy conferences and forums out there around the country. Businesses and corporations, again, for better or for worse. Businesses making policy for business can be a good or a bad thing, depending on who you're talking to. As well as governments and elected officials themselves and many, many others. But like the first person mentioned, I didn't catch your name, by the way. But you're absolutely spot on. Policy ideas come from people. Otherwise, they're not good policy issues, because they're built for people.
Nathan Iya is right here.
It's good to meet you, sir. Alright, thank you all for participating in that little exercise. I like to get everyone talking before I just start talking at you. And in that sense, you know, feel free to interrupt me at any time if I use some sort of jargon or something that you just don't understand and want some more clarity on. But now that we will have ample time for Q and A at the end. And before I get into the policymaking process, really, that we followed with the Salary History Ordinance, I want to make sure that we sort of get clarity on some key terms that we'll use throughout our time today. So the first thing I want to talk about is like the forms of government that exist locally. There's this form of government called the Council Manager Form of Government, where you have a city council and a city manager. In some cases, you also have an elected mayor who is chosen from that city council. And this is also like the most popular. I think it's like sixty percent of cities out there. The number kind of changes as cities change. But really, the city council oversees pretty much everything, except for the day-to-day operations of the actual city, right? The council sets the budget, makes policy, appoints the city manager, approves mayoral appointments, all sorts of other things. There's a mayor council government form, which is the second most common, where there is no city manager, in most cases. There may still be one, where most of the power resides with the mayor and city council. There's also this thing called a commission. Most of you who live in Hamilton County probably know there's the Hamilton County Commission. The cities actually used to have commissions as well. I think some cities still do. I think Dayton, Ohio is still a city commission, where you directly elect a few commissioners to a board, and they pretty much just run the city. That's a very not-so-common form of government anymore. It used to be really popular. I think it's less than like five percent of cities, and less now are managed by a commission. Counties a lot more. And in Cincinnati, we have kind of a mix of the first two, in that we have a very powerful city council. We have a city manager who is sort of the arbiter of city operations, the executive function. And then a mayor who is instead of chosen from council, they are actually directly elected. So it's kind of a shared triage of powers in some way or another, but we're supposed to be a council manager government, so just some context. Or, excuse me. Long day. So the job of a council member, something I want to talk about a bit. So the main job of a council member is, of course, to set policy. And a policy is a course of action for a community. There are many other definitions of what a policy is, but I think that sums it up. Policymaking often takes the shape of, as you all know, passing ordinances like the Salary History Ordinances, which are laws or resolutions. Get into that a little bit more here in a sec. And after policy decisions are made by the legislative body, which in Cincinnati, a city council, others, of course, perform the task of implementing those policies. That distinction can be a little blurry at times, so I think it's important to point out the importance of legislators knowing how to talk to the community, talk to other legislators and administrators to make sure that those lines stay clear for the purposes of sticking to our city charter, as well as just making sure that we're governing effectively. So adopting policy really doesn't happen in a vacuum, though. Like, people often say, like, legislators make policy. Well, legislators are just sort of the last stop on the train track, right? Policy comes to them from many places, especially the ideas for those new policies, whether it's community groups or any number of the other folks we discussed in the earlier slide. And council's responsibility, more so than coming up with everything and governing everything like a, you know, monarch in some sense, is rather to consider sort of the merits of each idea and then decide if they're gonna approve it or modify them or reject them, right, in their entirety. So in doing so, really, council members hold the responsibility of sort of keeping the needs of the community front of mind at all times, keeping different alternatives in their pocket, and also just keeping a really realistic sense of like, how many resources do we have available at the city, right? Whether it's money, staff, constitutionality, authority, right, all those sorts of things. The end decision often takes the form of an ordinance or resolution, but there are some other ways that could get done. But as you all probably know, the city budget and the city's comprehensive plan are really to the most common policy tools people use to really drive policy change, and that they sort of set the agenda for the city. Like I mentioned before, just ordinances are laws, right? They are legislative. And resolutions are more of these like informal statements of opinion. They are still important, but they don't necessarily enact binding legislation in the city. This is something else council members do. You know, you respond to a lot of constituents. Put the cat in there, right? Two cats. You know, if your cat gets stuck in a tree, you should probably know to just call the fire department. But I know some people out there would rather email their city council member, which is totally fine, and they will know to reach out to the fire department and help you out. Of course, there are more serious examples of things like that than people reach out to city council about, like zoning issues, housing questions. But responding to constituents altogether, big, big part of the job. Some other duties I think people don't necessarily think of, some more than others, maybe, or like managing personnel, keeping good relations with labor unions and negotiating labor contracts. Or, in Cincinnati, approving labor contracts, and we don't necessarily negotiate them ourselves, city council, as well as like complying with open government laws and doing training and all sorts of stuff like that. But really, the key takeaway from all this terminology is like, just so you know who runs the city, right? Council sets the policy, but they don't run the city, right? In Cincinnati, it's a mix of the mayor who sets strategy that the city manager then goes and executes in compliance with policies that the city council has set. So it's this sort of revolving check and balance of everyone doing their job. And hopefully, we govern the city effectively when everyone's doing their job. But this is where negotiation and collaboration between all three sides, right? In some cases, it's two sides, but here it's three. Really, our key to making sure the city actually runs like it should. Alright, any questions right there about those sort of high-level concepts? Nothing really to memorize. Just wanted to make sure we sort of establish that before we dive into the actual negotiation. Alright. So, the policymaking process, there are many ways people frame this. This is by no means like an approved or like peer-reviewed way of talking about policy. And I would argue that there is no, like, universal process people follow for making policy, but it generally follows a set of a few steps. First, of course, you establish what the problem is, right? If you're trying to solve a policy idea or a social problem or an economic problem, whatever it could be, a purely political problem, you have to first figure out what the heck the problem is, right? And establish that. After that, you go to formulate policy naturally. We'll talk about this in a little more detail. At some point, you're gonna have to engage the public. Ideally, you should do it early and not wait, but depending on what you're doing, you may have to do it throughout, at the beginning, at the end, and other orders. At some point, you will implement the policy as it passes. And afterwards, ideally, the policy should be evaluated and measured to make sure it's effective. So you may have to come back and do some adjusting if it's not. One thing, one thing I want to note about this is that, like, it's not linear, right? Like, this is like a circular process. Once you evaluate, you're sort of right back at the beginning. Like, maybe your policy actually caused more unintended consequences than you thought it would. And so you have to refine like what that problem is. You're gonna have to maybe find five new problems and figure out policy solutions for all five of them. It's really not this like step-by-step, but more so like a big circle. So agenda setting, right, is figuring out like what the problem or set of problem is we're trying to solve. In the case of the Cincinnati Salary History Ordinance that you passed, at the outset, we didn't think, oh, you know, let's go pass a salary history ordinance just because, right? No, I was, I was working for a legislator who cared about a number of issues, right? She cared about gender and racial pay inequity, cared about just the lack of negotiating power that women and people of color face in the workplace, and asking for higher pay. Employment discrimination, social and economic inequality, right? Like, you could just keep going down the line, right? Another problem we came across when talking about wages was the impact of student loans on young people and even older people. And those are just some of those initial questions we threw out there, right? Like, how do we solve those? And once you have that list of problems you're trying to solve, right? And doing that first, then you start saying, okay, what are the levers we might use, right? What are the mechanisms or the policies in this case to help solve that problem? So some of the key questions, you know, I would recommend asking. There are many others, but you want to make sure that the policy you're trying to pass doesn't do more harm than it does good. I think something we take for granted in the world of action is that sometimes it's okay to not act and rather do the right thing than doing something. And the other way around too, right? Sometimes you just have to try something and see if it works. Does the policy actually align with your agenda, right? Like, typically, if you're a council member, you have a vision of change that you're trying to bring about. Not every policy is gonna align, so you don't have to stay in your lane a little bit if you are someone who wants to, you know, accomplish a specific thing in your term. Does a policy have broad public support? If not, might not be a good idea to come after unless you can create that support. Is it constitutional? Is it within the bounds of your authority? So on and so forth. I think the Salary History Ordinance is small enough in scope, and it gives us a really good example of how to deal with each of these problems or each of these questions, I should say. So in considering, you know, how we would go about solving all of these big problems we need to define, like, when asked the question, how do I solve the gender pay gap, right? I was like, okay, I don't know. People have been working on this for years, right? There's so many things we could do. We could raise the minimum wage. We could pay women more just across the board. We could bolster workplace discrimination policy, right? There are so many things you could do. But I think banning the Salary History question was one thing we could try that we've seen other jurisdictions already doing. I think that was the key reason, like the deciding factor why we went after it, and that we saw a lot of other local jurisdictions doing it. So we were like, why the heck is Ohio a part of this? We were the first city in Ohio to consider one. I think at this point, three cities have already adopted it. At the time, none had. At the time, though, there were twenty-one local bans on the question. There were also nineteen statewide bans, which was really exciting. And some of these are highlighted here. Ohio is thankfully not highlighted on this list, because this is a more recent map. But you know, when you're doing this yourself in the future, because I imagine some of you elected officials one day, I advise going through those individual pieces of legislation in each jurisdiction and pulling out sort of like the top favorites. Like, if you see ones that are particularly relevant for your neighborhood or your home, or wherever you serve, pull those out as model policies, right? I think I went through, gosh, it probably had to be like thirty or so of these, you know, almost forty Salary History bans that are out there, and ended up with three. And it was really hard to narrow down from all the good ones that are out there, you know, ones that duplicate each other, some that aren't even relevant to Ohio, some that would be illegal in Ohio. But I ended up finding three that were really good. Those were Pittsburgh, NYC, and Philly. I won't get into like the details of why, because it's not really relevant for today's session, but you know, they varied a little bit, and I think it covered sort of all of the different ingredients. We wanted our local law to have. So we sort of broke those out and compared those. I think this is a good practice if you're looking at public policy in your local jurisdiction, sort of break it out by, you know, what is different, what's the same. So we took these three beautiful examples that we had and shaped a proposal, right? Like, this is a key first step in negotiating policy as a legislator. You gotta put something out there and then writing. And if you put it on paper and start sharing it with people, then you're, you've started negotiating, right? I've included an example here, because I'll share the deck afterwards of how you might go about it. There are a lot of good examples on the web, too, of how to write a good policy proposal. But I think from the perspective of a legislator, it's a little different, so this example might be particularly unique. In your proposal, you know, you want to really clearly state what it is you're trying to do, what you hope it will achieve, all the ingredients from your model policies that you're looking at, that you want to sort of weave together, and why? And any other information you may want to convey, because in the end, you're gonna have to hand this over to the city attorney's office. And I'll talk more about that in a second, but they're your best friend in this environment in most cases. In that they're, you know, lawyers, so they will be actually writing the policy for you. Of course, you get to dictate what they write, how they write it. They will be very, very helpful. In this case, you know, we did most of the, like, research ourself, but once we submitted it to the law department, things got a little tricky. Our law department circulated a memo, which I'm sure Hillary and Ywana remember, saying, you know, Anthony's office, they're looking at this thing that raises really big First Amendment problems. The city could get sued over it if we were to do it. And they shared that memo with the mayor, all of the members of council, and all of their staff. So we were like, darn it. That was the first, like, setback we dealt with. Of course, that sort of scares some council members into saying, I don't know if I could support this thing that I'm working on. And we hadn't even introduced it yet, right? It was just still in the form of a proposal when we were working on our office. There are a lot of parts. But that's okay, right? Like, we moved on anyway. I think that's a key part about negotiating policy is that when faced with skepticism or someone's, you know, being very cautious, that's okay. Caution is good, as long as you're just willing to keep charging ahead, right? So we did. We charged ahead, and we continued to share our proposal. And ultimately, the draft legislation we got back from the law department with people we trusted, right? We didn't want it to necessarily be like far and wide yet, because it was subject to some changes. But we shared a draft of the ordinance with a number of lawyers who we knew, worked in employment law, some organizations that helped work on gender pay issues, as well as some chambers of commerce. I think that was really key. And it helped us sort of develop like a coalition of supporters before the law was even public, right? And in terms of negotiating power, that is critical, because if no one's gonna come out and support this thing, it's basically dead upon arrival, right? And this note at the end is that, once you've finished and settled on, you know, what your draft legislation looks like, of course, you have to submit it to the council, right? It doesn't stay in this private, like, behind-the-scenes format for very long. Ooh, sorry, I keep yawning. Have my coffee, I promise. You know, like I mentioned, you know, working with the city attorney is just very interesting. I think this is something most people don't know about City Hall in many cases, but every city has some form of a city attorney or a law department, and their job is to advise city officials on legal matters. So they write legislation, they represent the mayor, they represent the city manager. They often represent other employees, departments, including city council. There are some trust issue that comes up sometimes, because council members will feel like they're, you know, disproportionately serving the mayor or the city manager, because that's their employer. But you have to be able to trust your city attorneys, at least at face value, to write legislation for you and at least give you an opinion, right? You can always get a second opinion, but their opinion is very important, and that they represent the city. I thought this graphic was interesting, or this photo. Vice President Biden at the time, he was in a meeting with some members of the cabinet, and it was at the Chamber of Commerce building, which is, of course, the biggest business lobby in the country. And I don't remember what it was. They were pitching some sort of bill. And it reminded me of a meeting where we didn't get any photos, and it wasn't as flashy as their meeting. But we held a meeting when we were discussing this Salary History law at City Hall before it was out, right? We invited all of the chambers of commerce locally, so all the various business groups, like the Indian-American Chamber, Cincinnati USA Chamber, African-American Chamber, you know, all these business groups around a table just said, hey, this is what we're doing. We are moving forward with it, right? Like, we're gonna introduce this piece of legislation, but there's a draft in front of you. And I was working, you know, the legislator I was working for, she was really good at framing that and saying, you know, firmly, we're gonna do it, whether you like it or not, in some ways, which I think is a good negotiation tactic. But we want your feedback, and we want your buy-in upfront. We didn't necessarily get an enthusiastic yes, but we got a okay, and thank you for the heads up, right? Like, that's really what the meeting resulted in. But I think that there's something to be said about, like, sitting down with, you know, who might be your opposition early on. Like, it can be really disarming, and I think President Biden And I think President Biden, who's the president, is clearly doing something right and he does a really good job of this, right? And many legislators do, like when he's about to introduce something, especially if it's gonna be controversial. Just sitting down with who you think your opposition might be and saying, this is what we're doing. Let me know your questions now, right? Like if you have any, maybe we can work with you upfront, maybe not, right? You don't have to, but at least you gave them the chance. Sort of the ask for forgiveness later, right? Don't ask for permission. And while we were doing that, you know, we didn't just engage the chamber, we engaged all of these organizations. And all of them from which we, so we reached out to all these folks and we requested letters of official support. In advance of even introducing this to city council. And we got them, right? Like everyone on this list sent a formal letter completely supporting the policy. They came from their CEO's office or their chief executive, which was really huge and it'll pay dividends later. We also got some awesome additional support from. Folks who publish research on my pay equity laws are actually effective. It helped us eventually prove that this was actually constitutional and didn't violate the First Amendment. Which we didn't think would be an issue at first, right? But then when the law department published that sort of damning memo. We were like, okay, we need some more academic proof that we don't get sued on this. Then we got it, right? So I think there's something to be said about making sure you have. Sort of the political support as well as the academic. Record on your side, right? Like if, if it's studies you need to cite. Or if it's political support, you have to drum up whatever it may be. Ultimately, that's negotiation as a legislator, right? Like just being able to make the case that what you're doing is actually gonna work. I also included a note about digital and press here because we pushed it hard early, right? When we put the piece of legislation on the council calendar in the committee. I think we had like maybe twelve or thirteen headlines already or. At least placements in different local news and even statewide national news outlets. And we're like, hey, Cincinnati is exploring this. This is news, right? Take a look. And it really helped us sort of frame the narrative positively right from the start rather than letting. The business community or anyone else who would oppose this. Come out and say Cincinnati's doing this scary thing. You shouldn't support it, right? Sort of controlling your narrative early. So the committee process here is where things got interesting, but I think this is really where we did the best job of negotiating and being patient. City councils, as most of you know, have committees that work on particular subtopics of policy. You may have like a transportation committee, a housing committee, whatever it may be. In Cincinnati, we landed in the Equity, Inclusion, Youth and the Arts Committee. Because gender pay equity deals with equity and inclusion. So I think the bill ending up there was sort of a natural fit. Or sorry, the ordinance. But you know, once it's been submitted, whether it's public support or not. Council members have to debate it in public. And really decide whether or not they should pass it to the full city council for final consideration. And either an upvote or a downvote. During the committee, a lot of things happened. I think it's important to pay attention. To your committees of city councils and, you know, the senate and congress, any other legislative body out there. Because during the committee, you're gonna get everything. You're gonna learn about the ins and outs of a policy. You're gonna hear from experts, from lawyers, you'll hear from the city side on it. You'll hear what other council members are thinking or whether. You'll even see them change their position if they can be convinced. And during the committee, all of those folks who we had engaged as partners. Right? We invited them in to come testify. Some of them. You know, some of them, the testimony was more like. This is, you know, we're thankful that they're doing this. We support it. Which isn't really all too helpful in the grand sense, but it's good. It's better than nothing. And just demonstrates some support. But ultimately, I think the most important testimony we got was from. A few key organizations like the Women's Fund. And a number of others who came in and basically proved the case that this works, right? Citing other cities and other examples. I use this image not to call the business community. Vladimir Putin of the world, but it can feel like this, right? Like no matter what policy you're negotiating, your opposite side, you sort of have to sit with your enemy and talk it out. Right? Like or your dissenter, just figure it out. And this, this picture was taken when Vladimir Putin and the Russian government had cut off. Europe from their oil supply and they had to host a public press conference. Praise Putin for turning all the oil back on. That was his condition, all he wanted. So sometimes you have to give a little bit. But in practice, you know, what we actually had to do was give and take a lot during that meeting. I think the first thing we realized was that some city council members were just not on board because. Of that memo that the law department had originally circulated. That our law raised some First Amendment problems. So we had expert testimony come in and talk about. Sort of the constitutionality of the policy and a peer reviewed study in California that proved that. A policy like this actually had the peer reviewed research and study enough. To withstand any sort of First Amendment lawsuit. And that sort of shifted a couple of council members to our side. That shifted council member David Mann to support the legislation. I don't know if it was the deciding factor or not, but he's an attorney, so I weighed heavily on his decision, which was awesome. There were also, like the Chamber of Commerce came to these meetings after. You know, having really said nothing after we gave them the opportunity to give feedback at the beginning. Now they had a lot of feedback, right? We're like, oh, okay. They basically wanted to gut the entire ordinance and say. Well, you can pass it, but make it like a resolution or something, so it's not binding. Of course, we weren't gonna do that, so we had to sort of make our stand where we would make it. But if we had just said, you know, no to all of their suggestions, I think we would have also been in a tricky situation. Because some council members wanted the business community in the chamber to be happy with the policy, or at least indifferent. So we had to give a few things up, talk about that in a little bit. But I think ultimately what we ended up with was still in balance. What we wanted to do at the outset. So there's something to be said for, you know, being willing to compromise when a lot is on the line. This is a good quote upfront that compromises, you know, so often used badly. And it's difficult to remember that, not really. It merely describes the process of reaching an agreement, right? Does anyone know whose quote this is? Like who said this? This was FDR. Yeah. Makes sense. It was like eighty percent of the American public voted for him. Something like that. But the final vote, you know, once the item got passed out of committee like this. It was six voting yes, which is a veto approved majority. Two voted no. It's intense. They sided with the business community and said, this is something we don't want to support. That's fine. And one council member was absent. So, you know, in balance, I think we did a really good job in that the wins we made and that. Employers in the city to this day, you know, can no longer request information about your pay history. Whether it's verbally or on an application. They can't rely on that kind of information to determine pay or benefits. They can't ask the question in any other way, shape or form. And we got a working group that still exists today to advise on implementation and help. Employers in the city get the materials and the guidance they need to properly comply. Some compromises, we had to exempt state and federal employees. Turns out the constitution doesn't allow us to tell the state or federal government what to do, so that's fine by us. We weren't really able to outline an enforcement process. Folks could of course bring a lawsuit forward if you feel like they've been asked the question rightfully. But ideally, you wanted to have more robust enforcement. Maybe that'll come later. And employers, and I said this was a compromise, but it's actually a good thing. Employers have completed this like really rigorous version of a pay equity certification in the last three years. They can be exempt from this rule, really because they're doing a lot more than just not asking. About salary history. They've got better pay practices and gender equity practices. So that's not really a compromise, but it's what the chamber wanted, so. Included in here some other references about like the stuff we talked about today for later. Feel free to take a look at this. Also included an activity you might do at some point. To come up with some of your own policy ideas and really get them fleshed out to a point that you can act on them. That is really it for like the formal part of my presentation. I'm happy to take any sort of questions or chat about anything you guys would like. And I still have another fifteen minutes, so I'll take any questions you guys have.
If anyone has questions, they can feel free to put them in the chat or they can certainly unmute themselves and ask away.
So nobody's gonna talk. Well, I'll talk. I don't care about talking. So. I'm running for city council, you know, I mean, I'll get my, I'll get my signatures, things of that nature. I'm actually running on a. Do they have any program for mothers? Who have children? Taken away from children's services? Is there anything to help them educate themselves? Is there anything at all? Does anyone know any, any programs at all?
Yeah, I mean, there, there are many. Yeah, I don't.
Please let me know, because I need to know, that's what I'm running on.
Yeah, I mean, we could definitely connect afterwards as well, but I know Rosemary's Babies and a number of other like social service organizations in the city. Do a lot of work with mothers and. And children and families issues, you know, job and family services also at the county level.
I definitely need you to be, you to be specific because I'm dealing with something like that in my family, my particular thesis. And you know, that's really gave me the drive and the fire to actually go and get and knock on doors. Get these signatures because there's nothing for mothers who are going through this situation. For them, for their children getting taken away from. Where are they? I'm, I'm, I'mma leave at that note. I'm gonna say that. Do you, do you really have something that's gonna educate them?
Yeah, feel free to shoot me an email after or connect with Hillary and Yolanda. We can keep that conversation going.
Well, and it seems like maybe that's where policy starts, right? Nathan raises an issue that's important to him. And obviously is important to, to individual mothers. Who are in that situation. And so he's asking a question and I can see how that might lead to policy. And to formation of like numbers like three one one or two one one and resources that we have in our.
Absolutely.
And how do we clarify?
Absolutely. A lot of times, you know, when I was staffing for council members, that's literally how we would start, right? Like a constituent would, to your point, reach out by email or give us a call and just highlight an issue. They wouldn't necessarily have like a perfect solution baked up or anything, right? It's, I have this problem. And if we noticed that there was no mechanism, you know, of course, we do our research and make sure there's, we're not duplicating anything. But if the city and the county and the state like didn't have anything to address the problem, right? Then there was usually something we could do. And at that point, council members tend to reach out to, of course, the person to let them know they're working on it. But also the law department, their attorneys to say, hey, what can we do, right? Like that's what your attorneys are for in that. They are your, your legal guide, right? They will tell you if there's anything we can do to address it. And if they don't give you a straight enough answer, you can start doing your own research. To see what other cities are doing, other countries are even doing. You don't have to only look at the United States.
You know.
Creative solutions.
I don't want to cut you off. Honestly, I know what other people are doing. Children's services are part of Title IV E of the Social Security Act. And there's nothing done in any county. It's kind of crazy. It's the same thing as fathers going through not being able to see their children. I'm not gonna go there because that's not my issue. My issue is mothers. Who are dealing with children's services. Now, there's nothing to educate them. You know, there's a particular issue, there's an issue where, you know, you know, according to every law in every state. Different family members get preeminent over the state. You know, how, you know, they take their children away from them. They're supposed to put them, instead of putting them in the system, different. Family members have preeminent over the state and instead of putting them in the system, they're supposed to go to the family member. But they don't get that information. They don't get no information. They don't get no understanding on their rights. Their child, even, even for instance, even if they get their child taken. Through children's services, they're supposed to have medical and educational rights. To make the decision making right. And you know, that's one reason I'm running because like I said, my nieces and nephews. I love them. I love them. I got pictures of them on my wall.
That is such, such a great example of how you.
But I'm gonna be quiet though, because I'm not gonna rant.
It looks like we do have another question. Elizabeth?
Hi, Anthony. Good to see you. Excellent presentation. Very thorough, very nice. Straightforward to follow. Good example too. And I think it was really good to bring up the whole compromise piece. Because I think sometimes the passions around particular policies can. Really lose sight of, really, you do have to negotiate all of these multiple pieces. And I really appreciate you laying out, excuse me, all those multiple pieces. But specifically, in your wins and losses on that. There was around areas of implementation and accountability. And so you, on the implementation side, you got a work group. Yay. On the accountability side, it's like, well, we can't really impose a penalty. It has to, you know, yada, yada, yada. But I think that when people are working on policy or crafting policy or bringing policy ideas. You don't always see. Those pieces put into the policy itself. And I think that that is probably an important and really overlooked piece of crafting policy. So I didn't know if, you know, if you had any thought, more thoughts on that.
Yeah, you know, it brings up a few thoughts and feelings too. On the accountability side, you know, in an ideal world, I would say that people bringing the policy idea shouldn't have to think about that. Right? That legislators should do their job and learn how to write effective policy that's, you know. Going to all people accountable to comply with it, right? But we don't live in an ideal world at all times. So, yeah, I wouldn't very much encourage anyone who's advocating for an idea or like works for an organization. That advocates for a particular set of policy, you know, issues or legislative issues. To workshop how other cities and other jurisdictions implement particular, particular policies. Because even for the same policy, I've seen like for the salary history ordinance, for example. Like we've seen at least like a hundred different ways you could possibly enforce the policy. You know, other cities have different department sizes, different staff levels, different funding levels. In some cases, the enforcement structure changed after a few years when they realized it wasn't very good upfront. And they had to maybe hire someone to do it or hire more staff in a particular department to enforce the rule. It's really just one of those things of figuring out what works locally and like making sure that your council members. You know, if they don't know it the first time around, they eventually come back and either pass an amendment or just ask their administration. Often it doesn't even require a policy change, just a question to say, hey, can we do this, right? Like, can we do this a little bit differently? Like, can we do this a little bit differently? I know it's not maybe a perfect answer to your question, but there's really no perfect solution there, aside from that needs to be a focus throughout.
Oh, well, uh, I would definitely speak if no one else is gonna speak, I will.
Any other questions, Scott? Yourself?
I have a question, if, if I were curious. Okay, we're, we're good, Nathan, all right, um, if, if I had a question about, um, I guess I have two questions. I'm, I'm interested in the housing and active a little bit in that, and I'm also interested in active in, uh, gun violence reduction. And if I wanted to say, look through city ordinances to find out what laws. We've already passed, uh, what ordinances exist, uh, for certain like keywords or in certain areas, is there a way to do that? Like, what's the most efficient way to find out what already exists, so I know what framework I have?
Yeah, let me take a stab at your question in two ways, so. At, at face level, if you want to find a city ordinance or like a law that we have on the books. Um, municipal code on the city website, you can just type in a Google, like City of Cincinnati Code of Ordinances, and you'll find a. Municipal code library, which is basically like a LexisNexis portal that you can look through all our laws, right, and find anything. But I think the more nuanced thing I want to mention with, uh, like. Issues like housing policy or gun, you know, gun violence prevention. It's not just local, right? Like, a lot of that stuff, as you probably know, is wrapped up in federal laws and, you know, things that cities can and cannot regulate. Um, things that states can and cannot regulate, and it varies from state to state. Uh, so when you're looking at these big, like wicked problems like gun violence, I encourage you to, of course, look at. You know, what are the things at the local level that you can do, right, where that you've seen? Maybe cities in Ohio or states that are similarly conservative at the state level. Uh, on what they allow their cities to accomplish or to regulate. Uh, what are those cities doing that we haven't done, right, that are working? And why haven't we done that, right? Um, so for example, like I look at some of these other mid-sized cities like Memphis and Louisville and Lexington. Um, even like Austin, Texas, and Portland, Minneapolis, right, like you can keep naming off cities like. That have similar makeups in Cincinnati in demographics or in politics. Um, and you can start looking at, you know, what are some of the creative programs that they've got in those areas that we maybe can learn from? Uh, because the reality is a lot of our city administration officials are too busy. Uh, and, you know, underpaid and short-staffed to be looking. Like, I've gotten answers from city managers themselves saying like. I wish I had the budget to go to more conferences, to hang out with other city managers, to learn from them. Right? But the unfortunate reality is that in cities like Cincinnati. Uh, we don't have the freedom or like the flexibility to give our city staff to go out and constantly be doing professional development. Going to other conferences with other city professionals. Um, the same goes for council members, right, like they should, in an ideal world, go attend conventions and meetings with other council members. Those trips are not just for fun, right, it's really to go out and fact find and bring back good ideas to our city.
And so you're saying like that work is, is staff members and council members' work to just. Google search and read newspapers and reach out and, and just find out. Out through good old fashioned, uh, rolling up your sleeves and, and elbow grease.
It, it sounds crazy sometimes, people, you know, have these like. Larger-than-life views of politicians, uh, at times that, you know, there, there are somehow these like secret networks out there where they get all their ideas. And there really aren't, like all the way up to the presidency, you know, things get a little bit more formalized, but. They're out there just looking around, right, like their staff are out there Google searching and, you know, Google alerts set up for different cities that they're paying attention to. And they're, they're seeing what works and what doesn't, and trying to emulate, uh, where they can. I'd say very rarely is there something that a city tries that's never been done before. I, I, I think most cities have, like, you, anything you want to try in the policy space at the local level, someone's probably tried it.
Wow, if you challenge that, Mr. And, Mr. Johnson, I would definitely challenge that. And what I would say is that I'm part of the Father's Rights Movement of America. Not only, um, um, not on UPC, uh, United Parents Coalition. Uh, fighting for fatherhood, uh, many different, uh, uh, Father's Rights Movement. Okay, so when we talk about something that has not never happened in Cincinnati. I can definitely tell you something that's never happened in Cincinnati and what has not happened in the United States period. When you think about it, think about it like this, okay? Um, unmarried, if you're not married, unmarried father. Has no rights whatsoever to his child, and guess what that does? That gives billions of dollars of revenue to Ohio. Because of child-supported alimony. Through child-supported alimony, the state gives billions of dollars to keep fathers away from their children. Okay, so that's one thing. One thing that, um, I'm fighting for, but you know what? I'm not gonna elaborate, I'm not gonna talk too much, I'm gonna throw that out there. But what I would also say is, I'm gonna throw this out here too, is not only is fathers, but if, if there's no father in. The child's life, then the mother also gets her child taken through children's services, where she gets different child support. She gets her child taken away too, so these are. The things that are going on now, and, um, I'm addressing those. And I'm also, I'm getting, uh, it's easy for me to get signatures, I'm, I'm definitely close to my five hundred. Um, it's easy to get signatures when you're dealing with a, a problem like that, because it's rampant. Everywhere in America, but nobody's dealing with it. Why is there no nonprofit that's dealing with mothers dealing with their child being taken away? Or no nonprofit at all that's dealing with unmarried fathers who have no access to see their child, kiss their child, give their child something that they like? And, and enjoy their child, there's nothing. For mothers in that particular situation.
I, I'm sorry to interrupt, but we are at time to move on to our next segment. But I really want to thank Anthony so much for coming and sharing his expertise and experience with us. Um, so thanks, Anthony.
Thank you guys for having me, and thanks everyone for the, for the questions and for being. Look forward to watching Dave, um, in the next group.
Yeah, yeah, everyone, um, so I'm going to introduce our next two speakers who are very fun. So wake up and stretch, because this is gonna be cool. So our next two speakers are Caitlin McWethie and Dave Powell, I'm gonna spotlight right now. And, uh, they are going to go over some cool improv exercises with us tonight. Um, they are excellent improv instructors, they've worked with us in the past at City Council School. And they're a blast, I'm gonna tell you a little bit about both of them. Caitlin McWethie is an actor, director, and teacher in Cincinnati. After a decade of performing across the country, Caitlin received her MA in private interest in the public good from Xavier University in May twenty twenty. Her personal work focuses on ensuring that the experience of theater, both seeing it and making it, is a public good. Accessible for all, representative of the community theater, that the community at theater serves. And delivers a positive impact beyond the art. Her past collaborations include partnerships with Elements Refugee Connect, Q Kids Dance Key. Q Kids Dance Team, the Greater Cincinnati Native American Coalition, the Interfaith Hospitality Network. Arts Wave Pride, the Center for Addiction Treatment, and the Kentucky Foundation for Women. She is a member of Actors Equity and alum of Theater of the Oppressed New York's Joker Training Program. And a recipient of the Michael Ford Field Experience Scholarship for Excellence in the Study of Public Policy. Dave Powell is a native of Cincinnati and currently a member of the faculty at Xavier. He received his BFA from the College for Creative Studies in Detroit, Michigan. And is a graduate of Second City Conservatory Writing and Graduate Programs. Dave is formerly the artistic director of OTR Improv and a board member of the League of Cincinnati Theater. He is also a teaching artist for Cincinnati's Playhouse in the Park, No Theater, and the Cincinnati Shakespeare Company. Dave wants you to remember that life is more interesting when you listen and say yes. Aw, hand it over to you guys.
That was adorable, I thought after that might just be Dave Powell's a dude. All right, so, uh, welcome, everybody, we are, um, thank you very much for that, Hilly, and thank you Action Tank again for having us. Uh, what we're gonna be working on is, uh, the idea of collaboration and theater and working together. Because most people, when they think of theater, they think of performance, and they think of the finished product that they see when they go out and they see a show. But that has to go all the way back to the rehearsal space, and that goes through a lot of people actually working together. From people that are gonna be your stage manager, to your director, your producers, your costumers. Um, all of your props, people in the wings, your front of house, back of house, and the actors themselves. And it is a huge group effort that needs to be worked together. And we are actually going to go through some basic stuff of saying yes and to each other and listening to each other and collaborating with each other.
Yeah, um, so, yeah, basically, our jobs require us to say yes to each other, sometimes. With onstage in front of hundreds of people, so, um, the way that we kind of align with our, our getting to yes exercise or our program today. Is that, um, we practice this on a regular basis, and for many of us over decades, it's like a muscle. In the same way that you would go to a gym to work out your biceps, we go to rehearsal and we practice listening to each other, responding and. And finding a collaborative solution with our team. So there are a lot of tools that we use on a regular basis that can be applied to, um, to what you're doing or what you're heading into. They may seem a little silly and strange, but I promise that they have, uh, an applicable place. An example is, uh, and as Hilly said, in one of my sort of areas of personal interest is Theater of the Oppressed. So basically, this is a, a type of theater that was developed by a gentleman named Augusto Gual. And, uh, he developed a, something called Forum Theater within that. Uh, it's basically a group problem-solving tool that uses techniques that we use in theater. For members of a community to solve a problem collaboratively together. Um, and, uh, that actually went on to, uh, Augusto Gual was elected to city council in Rio, he was Brazilian. And, um, he served several terms there, and while he was on council, he established multiple, I think there were seventeen. Forums around, uh, the city of Rio while he was on council. And from those forums, thirty-one pieces of legislation were created and passed, uh, in the city. And, um, so like Anthony was saying, that the policy comes from the people, and we were talking about that. That's one of the ways in which theater can be, and tools from the theater can be directly applied to policymaking. So if you want to learn some more about that stuff, because it's super cool, uh, you can look up Legislative Theater, it's a book published by Augusto Gual. And, uh, that, uh, sort of documents that whole process of how a piece of policy comes from a theatrical environment. But we're not gonna go that far, that's super advanced, so we're gonna start sort of at a basic square one. With some introductory exercises that you would use, were you to go into that kind of situation? Basically, what it's gonna be doing is we're gonna start our first workout with our, uh, with our like saying yes muscles. Um, and I'll hand it over to Dave to start off.
All right, uh, so the first thing we're gonna do is this idea of putting our dynamic self in, and if, uh. Hilly, if you could set it actually to where the video, uh, focuses on the speaker, that will be awesome, because we're actually gonna be going through. And, uh, Yolanda or one of you, if you could set, um, we can go through the roster and call people out, and then they will be our next person or decide who's gonna go next. Um, so what we're gonna be doing is, this is an exercise called superhero stance, and this is being your dynamic self. The idea is I'm saying yes to yourself, because it's something that we often actually, um, we take for granted. We think, oh, of course, I'm gonna be saying yes to myself, uh, but sometimes we don't go into a situation. Um, ready to do that, and this idea is being your dynamic self, and why it's called superhero stance is, when we think of superheroes. They don't just walk into a room and no one notices them unless they're Batman. What they're doing is they go through the roof, they come up through the ground, they bust through a wall. And everyone sees them, as well as they are bigger than themselves, they're a bigger presence in themselves. On stage, we have to be bigger, because we have to fill a room, but then also, um, for anyone that was a council member or something like that. They are representing people, they're representing their constituents, so the idea of they're representing the people in that room as well. They're gonna be fighting for them, or possibly at least representing them and advocating for them. So what we're gonna do is this, is I'm gonna say my name, and I'm going to do my superhero stance. And then everyone will say my name back to me and do my superhero stance as well. And then, um, we'll go through the roster and everyone will take a turn doing it as well. So it's saying your name, doing your superhero stance. Now, if right now you're thinking, I can't think of a superhero stance whatsoever, that's you saying no to yourself right now. We have to get in the habit of saying yes to ourselves. Feel free to steal any superhero stance from anyone, you can think of Wonder Woman, Captain Marvel, um, Green Lantern, Superman, Batman, whoever. You can also, um, just anything that is most natural, easy for yourself, so. Mine is this, I'm gonna go like this, I'm just gonna say my name, do my superhero stance, and everyone's gonna do it back to me. So if everyone has your cameras on right now, that wants their cameras on, and also is unmuted right now, that would be great. All right, I'm just gonna give a moment for that to, um, filter through really quickly. All right, here we go, so mine is this. Damn. Now everyone do it back to me.
Dave.
Hey.
Oh, brilliant, love it, feels good to see it come back to me. All right, uh, you, you wanna, who's first?
Cory. Cory.
Cory, could you do it again? One more time?
Cory.
Cory. And who's next, Yolanda?
Can I do yours, Katie?
No, just, just yours, just yours. We're not gonna go through all twenty of them. Great question, though, I'm sorry, Yolanda, who's next?
Katie.
I was thinking we said, I said over here that we, but we're doing a pose?
Yeah, just do a pose and you're say your name, and say your name.
Right, um. Can you come back to me, I'm sorry, I think. Superhero in mine, not a pose.
No, no, it's great, it's great, uh, you've already got it.
I'm ready, I'm ready.
And here's my pose, Katie.
Katie, yep, just say Katie, excellent. Katie, love it, perfect.
Jack.
Jack. Jack. I didn't have to borrow.
Elizabeth. Elizabeth.
Elizabeth.
Do you do it one more time, Elizabeth, we just didn't, the video didn't catch up to you?
Elizabeth, and anybody who's been in meetings with me knows I do that, I get this like.
Valerie.
Valerie.
Just one more time.
Amen.
Amen.
David.
Kira.
He take care.
Kira. Oh, you're on mute.
All right, um, I'm just going Kira.
Yeah, good one. Kira.
Kurt. Kurt. Okay, I'm moving on, Natasha. Nathan. We have a lot of shy people tonight.
Oh, don't let me, I gotta represent myself, don't do that.
Okay.
Nathan, I, yeah. The friend, the, the friend of Jeff Pastor. Represent, coming through with the GOP. Definitely Father's Rights Movement, Nightcrawler. Nightcrawler of the motherfucker, oh, ooh, I, I cussed, didn't I, I cussed on this thing, I, not a cuss, ooh, I couldn't. Let me get off of here, I, I already cussed, Nightcrawler. At a GOP, you already know what it is, I'm gonna get off there, I'm getting off.
All right, I, I caught Nathan.
Terry. Okay, we, that might be all I've got tonight.
Awesome, awesome, awesome. Great job with that. Give yourselves all around applause. Fantastic job, fantastic job. So a few things about that is, yes, that idea of we do this all, and, um, in improv, we get so worried about actually making people laugh. All we do is the exercise to the best of our ability. And notice, a lot of people got laughs just by doing it. And then how good it feels when you hear your idea come back to you and people agree to it already. So we're already on a subconscious level, working on saying yes and agreeing with each other. All right, so next exercise, I'm going to hand it back over to Caitlin.
All right, hi, yay. Okay, so for this one, don't worry, there's no like, uh, having to, Juana, thank you so much for that support. This time, we don't have to call people out. So you'll just be doing this in the comfort of your own home, or wherever you are. If you can, it would be awesome to find a space where you can stand. It's okay if you're not looking at the camera, as long as you can hear my voice guiding you. So if you can find a, a spot where you can stand, uh, so that you have enough room to kind of march in place. But other than that, we're pretty much stationary. If you can't do that, that's totally cool. You can find like, an option that works from where you're seated. So basically, this is called Stop and Go. And the point of this game is to have us recognize our ingrained patterns and how difficult it can be sometimes to change them. Like, uh, Anthony was saying, sometimes you get so focused on the thing that it is that you're fighting for, that you have sort of blinders on to maybe the other people's needs in the room and collaboration is necessary. So this is a game that sort of, uh, it has us start to work on getting out of our own, our own ingrained patterns. So it's pretty simple. Basically, we're just going to start by walking in place. When I say go, when I say stop, you will stop. Let's give it a try. All right, go. You can just walk in place, or wherever, uh, whatever sort of seated variation is good for you. Okay, stop. Nice way to go. Oh, well, I said go, so you can go. And stop. Okay, that's pretty clear. Now we're going to do up and down, add up and down. So, uh, we have stop and go, but we also have up. If you could put your arms up over your head, that'd be great, or whatever variation of that works for you. Um, and then down, you'll just sort of find a little crouch. If that's possible, again, whatever variation works for you, it's totally cool. So now we have four things, four rules, four commands, I guess that's the word. All right, so you can go, and we can start walking in place. Stop, up, down, go. Up, down, go. Fantastic. Okay, we can stop it right there. Uh, and then the last pair of commands we're going to give you are left and right. So when I say left, you look to your left. When I say right, you look to your right. Pretty clear. There we go. Also, I learned the last time I did this on Zoom, I start like doing it as I'm saying it, but it's much better if I just say the commands. Instead of also challenging myself to do the exercise at the same time. So, um, so go, left, up, down, stop, go, stop. Left, down, go, stop. Well done. How's everybody do? How's everybody feeling? I can see some faces or some cameras. So if you, if you do have your camera zoom up, zoom camera up, give me a thumbs up if that's going okay. Looks good. All right, thanks, guys. All right, so now we're going to do the actual challenging part. So here's the thing, now the rules are reversed. When I say go, you stop. When I say stop, you go. We're going to start with that one. Now, let's do them all at once, so it's not too confusing. All right, yes, go is stop, stop is go. Now up is down, and down is up. And left is right, right is left. All right, we'll start simple. Stop, go, stop, go. Down, up, down, stop. Right, left, stop. Oh, that's good, that's good. You're still going. I love it. Down, up, go. All right, nice job. Very simple, very simple little thing to just shake your brain up a little. Awesome, well done. I'm going to hand it back over to Dave.
All right, uh, so the next exercise we're going to do is, this is actually a word association exercise. And, um, we're going to do it a few different ways. Uh, one is kind of a regular word association. But then there is one called a word association pedal. And what we're going to see is this idea of, we're going to be working off of each other's idea. But first off, how we do it and what the focus is every time we answer, and then how that can actually, um, start to create a collaboration and notice a pattern of working with each other. Because human beings, we fall into patterns naturally. Whenever we're working together, we actually fall into patterns. We can't resist it. If you're like, I don't fall into patterns that often. All of us have a pattern beating in our heart, in our chest right now, keeping us alive. Yes, it is our heart. We can't resist, um, patterns at all. So this idea of word association, what's going to happen is, um, Juana, um, if you could just like, give me a list of, uh, people in order, um, of when they'll go, and if you can just, um, list, uh, like, I'm going to describe the game a little bit more when I'm looking for, and then I'll come back to you, um, the order that you'll go. All you need to pay attention to is when you go, um, who goes before you, and who you're going to be following after that. So, um, the first one is this, is I'm just going to say a word, and you are going to word associate it, but you're not going to pay attention to the person, what they say before you. You're just going to keep going back to the word itself. So just to repeat that, you're going back to the word itself. You're not being inspired by what the person said right before you.
To do an example?
Um, yeah, yeah, um, as an example, Caitlin asked me if we want to do an example. As an example, if I said the word was house, she would say?
Bathroom.
Awesome. I'm going to go off of house. Well, I'm going to say attic, though. I'm not going to be inspired by bathroom, and then she's not going to be inspired by attic. So that's how it works right there. All right, so it looks like Juana has put the, um, in the chat, she put the order. And, um, the order is, um, this right here, just to, um, say it out loud. There, you're fine. It is Cory, Damon, Elizabeth, Frank. Elizabeth just left, so Cory, Damon, Skip and Elizabeth, and Frank, Jack, Katie, Kira, Kurt, Leslie, Natasha, Samantha, Terry, Tiffany, Valerie, and Sarah. Going to say it one more time, just so we get it, just make sure you hear who you follow after. Cory, Damon, Frank, Jack, Katie, Kira, Kurt, Leslie, Natasha, Samantha, Terry, Tiffany, Valerie, and Sarah. All right, so, uh, Cory, you're first. The word that you are going to bounce off of, but everyone's going to be bouncing off of this word, is electricity. Electricity is your word, so hit me with it.
Sorry, I missed the prompt, because I was emailing.
No worries.
I have to be honest, I gotta work email.
Lesson about listening in improv.
I'm so sorry.
Perfectly fine, perfectly fine. The, uh, word is electricity. You're going to brainstorm off of the word electricity.
Just say any word?
Any word, based off of electricity.
Okay, Edison.
Excellent. Damon, electricity.
All right.
Thank you. Frank? We're going to skip Frank. Jack?
Ions.
Thank you. Katie?
Light bulbs.
Perfect, awesome. Kira?
Hydroelectric dam.
Awesome, love it, love it, love it. Uh, Kurt? Skip Kurt, Leslie? Skip and Leslie. All right, Natasha?
Shock.
Shock, excellent, thank you. Samantha? Going to skip Sam. Terry? All right, Tiffany? All right, Valerie?
Eat.
Awesome, thank you. And Sarah? And Tina, Tina?
Edison.
Awesome. Oh my gosh, we came back to Edison. Amazing. All right, uh, great job, great, great job with that. Great job. So, uh, what we noticed there is, when you just went back to the idea, it was all very closely related to the idea. But not, um, we didn't really get inspired by each other. So that idea of like, we weren't really listening, we didn't have to listen to each other. Um, and so we really weren't affected by each other. So now what we're going to do is, we're just going to do another round. This is going to be a practice round, and we're going to do one final round. And, um, we're going to go through the same group again, the same order. So Cory, you're going to be first again. Um, and then Cory, actually, I'm going to come back and end on you as well. Just because, um, you only respond to the prompts, but I also want you to respond to the person that comes at the very end as well. And what you're going to do is this, is, um, this is almost kind of the idea of a pedal, but we're not there yet. But what we're going to do is, I'm going to say another word, and then you're going to be inspired by the person that goes right before you. So you're not going to go back to the word, back to the original word. You're going to be inspired by the person and what they say right before you. So this is going to travel a little further away, probably from the word. As an example, with what, um, Caitlin and I just did, if it was house, and then she said?
Bathroom.
Then I would say sink.
Say toilet paper.
And I would say something I don't want to say on camera in front of a bunch of people right now. Yeah, gotta keep it appropriate. So, um, it's the idea of building off of the word right before you. All right, um, so the word this time is, um, sky. Sky, as in big blue sky.
Blue. You just said it, but blue.
Awesome, blue. Damon?
Flower.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that a little bit louder, sir?
So am I building off of blue, or am I just building off?
You're going off blue. Yes, you're going off blue.
And is this anything blue or something that has to do with sky?
Anything, anything whatsoever, that's blue.
Okay, perfect. Water.
Perfect, yes. It doesn't have to relate to the first word, just the previous word. Water, excellent. All right, next is, um, Frank?
I don't think Frank's here.
That's right, you're right, Jack. And you're next, Jack.
Waterfall.
Waterfall, excellent, love it. Um, Katie?
Hiking.
I'm sorry, what was I? Could you repeat it, please?
I'm going off a waterfall, right?
Yes.
Anything like about it?
Anything, anything at all, whatever you're inspired to say.
I said hiking.
Hiking, oh, thank you, thank you. I just didn't hear. Thank you, perfect. All right, Kira?
Parks.
Parks, thank you, parks. All right, Kurt? Kurt was here, and, uh, so next would be, uh, Leslie? No, Leslie, all right, Natasha? Natasha, Samantha, Samantha, um, you there? All right, updating our list. Terry?
Backpack.
Backpack, awesome job, backpack. All right, uh, Samantha. Uh, I'm sorry, that's Terry. Tiffany? No, Tiffany. Valerie?
Water bottle.
Water bottle, awesome. Uh, Sarah? Cool, and then, um, Tina?
Workout.
Workout, and I'm coming back to you, Cory, on a workout.
Sweat.
Sweat, excellent, excellent, excellent. All right, so now what we noticed here is, uh, we went further away from the original idea. It was just blue, though we got to like water and sweat, they're still, um, kind of related in a way. And, um, but I wouldn't say it had too much direction to it. Now what we're going to do is, we're going to add, uh, both elements together. And what the idea is this, is, um, this is now, um, a brainstorm that actually has, um, has a pedal to it. So we're going to start at an idea, we're going to try to get back to the idea. We want to naturally get back to the idea. We actually kind of did in the first one, we went back to Edison. And what's going to happen is this, is we're going to play it the way we just played it. I'm going to say the first word, uh, and, um, Damon just.
Yes.
Cool. Um, and Cory, you'll start us off again. But everyone's going to be inspired by the word that comes right before them. But hopefully, what we're going to start to notice is maybe a natural way to get back to the first word. Now, if it doesn't happen, that's fine, but that's the goal of it, is we're still reacting and listening to the person right before us, but we're trying to get back to that original word. And, um, we might get back to it before then, so we might get everyone involved. We'll see, we might have to go through the round, we'll get, we're going to try to do it, or at least through it twice, and see if we can get back to it. And what the idea is, as we're doing this, is to think about, is, if I just think about what our end, the goal is, but I'm not taking into account what everyone's saying, our ideas are, our ideas are going to be kind of limited. As an example, if we're just thinking of an ordinance surpassing a proposal or something like that, we're not going to think of a lot of ideas. But if we're using all of the ideas of the people in the room, we'll naturally actually discover some things as we're going, things we didn't expect, and still accomplish the goal that we're going for. It's not as easy, it's not as direct, but there actually is more life to it. So just in review, I'm going to say a word, we're going to reply to the person right in front of you, and we're going to see if we can get back to our first word. And, uh, the new list that we have here is Cory, Jack, Natasha, Katie, Kira, Terry, Valerie, T, and Tina. Don't think so, don't think so. All right, um, so, um, Cory, you're going to respond to this word, and we'll go two times through, and then, um, Jack, you are next. And your word this time is bumper. Bumper, and this is the word we're trying to get back to eventually.
Car.
Car.
Crash.
Crash, all right. Natasha, are you there? All right, Katie?
Um, I'm having trouble thinking.
No worries, no worries. Uh, just with car.
Bumper.
Hey, we're back.
Man, we got there really quickly.
Oh, wait, no, I'm sorry. That's why it's in my head.
Ahead of schedule, baby.
That was a very small pedal. Let's see if we can get back there again. So Katie just said bumper again. Kira, where are you?
Bowling.
Bowling, oh my gosh, love it. Terry?
Ball.
Ball, 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 thank you. Valerie?
Tennis racket.
Tennis racket. Tina?
Court.
Courts, excellent, back to Cory?
Law.
Court, law, law, all right, Jack?
Order.
Order, order, all right. Uh, I'm just going to skip and go to Katie.
Court.
Order, back to court, awesome, courts. Um, Kira?
Judge.
Judge, judge, all right, Terry?
I don't.
I don't know. Uh, judge. Court.
Court, back to court, alright, Valerie?
Penalty.
Penalty, Tina?
Lawsuit.
Lawsuits, and Cory?
Black Lives Matter.
Black Lives Matter, excellent, alright, that's the two cycles right there, great job with that, really, really great job. What's funny is, even though we were trying to get back to bumper, and we got there really quickly, actually. We didn't actually get there at the end, we didn't come back to it, but notice we actually landed on court. Court became a thing that we actually started coming back to, and in a new way, that became actually our new center and a new focus, which sometimes can happen in collaboration as well, is we think this goal is the end goal, but really, this thing becomes what we start talking about right here, and it can be a discovery that actually might be more important as well. Alright, I'm gonna move back and give it back to Caitlin.
Right, hello, yay, okay, cool, so now we have a new game, lots of games tonight, this is fun. So this one's the object game, so it's sort of building, we're taking this, the, exactly the same sort of structure as the word association game, but we're sort of amping it up a notch. Basically, what I'll do is, if we were in a circle in the same room together, I would say, I'm gonna take this metaphorical tiny imaginary object, well, it doesn't necessarily have to be tiny, taking this metaphorical object, I'm gonna put it in the middle of our circle, and now we're gonna go around and describe this object together. Now, we're gonna start with a starting place, let's see, oh, Dave, can I have a suggestion? A suggestion for an object that's nondescript?
Refrigerator.
Alright, we have a refrigerator, I'm gonna take this giant refrigerator, I'm gonna put it in the middle of our metaphorical, not digital circle. And now we're gonna go around the circle and describe it, so, in the same way we went around word associating, your job is now to come up with a descriptor for our refrigerator. Now, important things, we have to remember, is it doesn't matter if it's real or not. Actually, in fact, the more outlandish and crazy it is, the better, that's super fun. Our refrigerator can be anything, it can do anything. However, the biggest part here is that we cannot contradict each other when we say things about the refrigerator. So if I say that it's blue, then it comes back around to me and I say that it is red, I've just contradicted myself. It can't be both blue and red, it can't be both big and small. It has to have maybe a giant door, but a very small freezer, or it has blue polka dots on a red background, or something like that. So my job is to listen to what everybody else is coming up with, and to add to it without contradiction. So, does that make some sense? Alright, so we've got our refrigerator, it's not too, it's just there, it's kind of a boring refrigerator, now let's make it do some cool stuff. Alright, so, I'm gonna change this up, so Cory isn't in the hot seat all the time, let's start with, let's start with Valerie, Valerie, give me something about our refrigerator.
Neon.
It's neon? Alright, oh, and here's the other part that's important, after every contribution everyone makes, we all say together, yes, alright? So, it's neon, Valerie, awesome, now everybody all together? Yes! Love it. Tina, add something to our refrigerator.
It's not only neon, but it's tie-dyed neon.
Ooh, yes!
Yeah.
Yes.
Kurt, are you here?
Oh, you're muted, Kurt.
Would you like to add something?
Okay, there I am.
Yes.
There I am, I've had some technical difficulties this evening.
No worries.
I'd say it's a side-by-side refrigerator freezer.
It's a, what was that?
Side-by-side.
Nice! Side-by-side, love it, thank you, everybody, and all together, yes! Love it. Cory?
Um, it's got lots of different types of hot sauce.
Yes!
Yes!
Jack?
It's menacing.
Yes! It is menacing. Natasha, are you there?
It's unplugged.
Katie?
It has an ice maker.
Yes! Awesome. Kira?
Ice maker's overflowing.
Yes, it is, yes! Terry?
It has rollers.
Awesome, it does, yes!
Yes.
Fantastic, okay, cool, you all nailed that, wonderful. Now, I'm gonna make it a little bit more exciting, is that I have a mystery object now, there it is. It can, I'm, so, the way that we started with the refrigerator, now this time, we're gonna put something in the middle of the circle that we don't know what it is. And as we go around, the information that's provided, that we make up about this object, will maybe inform what it is, so, um, this is a new, I'm trying a new, this is an experiment, you guys are all like, on this, yes, thank you! So basically, we might come up with something that is completely fantastical, or we might have found that we just described a car, or a giraffe, or something like that. So, I'm gonna do the same sort of thing, here we go, there's a mystery object in the middle of our metaphorical circle, and we're gonna start again, let's mix it up a little now, too, we're gonna start with Natasha, are you there? Some people have been going in and out, so I just don't wanna leave anybody out. No worries, come back, okay, Kira, do you think you can start us off?
Sure, it's curvy.
Ooh, it's curvy, love, yes!
Yes!
Alright, so knowing that it's curvy, we're moving on to the next person who can describe this thing, Terry?
Ceramic.
I'm sorry?
Ceramic.
Ceramic.
Yes! Valerie?
It has legs.
Yes!
Yes.
Tina?
It holds something.
Yes! Kurt?
I have no idea.
That's okay, if it's okay if you don't know, you can also just make something up, and maybe by the end it'll be a thing, or maybe by the end it'll be something completely fantastic, and that's-
It's on wheels.
It's on wheels! Yes, it is on wheels, awesome. Cory?
It's priceless.
Oh, it is.
Yes! Natasha, are you back? That's okay. Katie?
I'm trying to think. Silver?
It's silver? I like that, yes!
Yes!
Awesome. Did we start with Kira?
Yeah.
Yes, okay, cool, so those are the things we know about it. Yay! Thank you for saying yes to me, that is amazing, I'm not sure what we made, some sort of-
We made an NFT.
What's that?
Non-pungible token, it's all the right- That's clearly what they look like.
That's amazing, thank you guys so much, that was really fun, awesome, now we've got, I got, oh, it's me still, alright, cool. So now we've got another game, we're gonna kind of shift tone a little bit here. And we added this one in because we feel like all of you are potential policymakers, yeah, or current, perhaps, policy creators. And, and what we like about this game is, it's a reminder that everyone is human. So, this may be a game that you played in a summer camp sometime, or maybe that your kids have played. It's called Anyone Who Like Me. And basically, how this works is, we'll go around in our little metaphorical circle, and, and we'll say something about ourselves that is true. Preferably, it's nice if it's something that maybe other, the other people, the other people in this group don't know about you. Something that is perhaps a little bit personal, but you know, you define what that means to you. And, yeah, so, basically, anyone who also has this in common in the group can, in the chat, say me too. So, we'll start us off with some examples, myself and Dave will do one, so you can kind of feel it out. And then we'll go through, and actually, I think I'll probably ask Killy and Ioana if you're around to, to jump in on this one as well. So, cool, let's say, mine will be, anyone who like me has worked full-time since they were 15, or early teens, mid-teens, I guess that is. If, if you have that in common with me, you can put that in the chat.
Anyone like me who went to Catholic high school?
Awesome, thanks folks, alright, I'll go ahead and read us off, actually, Killy, why don't you take it away?
Sure, anyone who like me is a stepparent.
Ioana, you around, do you wanna go?
Or anyone like me who is a single parent.
Terry, why don't you take it away?
Who did she say?
Oh, she just said, anyone who like me is a single parent, but for you, you can, anything about yourself that's true, that you would like to share with the group, preferably something that other people don't know. And we'll see who within the group has that in common with you.
Anyone like me travels, loves to travel.
Awesome. Valerie?
Anyone like me that's an only child.
Jack?
Anyone like me who's helped a parent with dementia?
Cory?
Anyone like me who loves longboarding?
Kira?
Me who didn't have pets while growing up.
Natasha? Katie?
Anyone like me who loves dogs?
Tina?
Anyone who like me loves to take long walks around the city.
And Kurt?
Anyone like me who waited until after the age of 65 to run for office the very first time in their lives?
Awesome, did I miss anybody there? Great, good job, you all, thank you so much for, for, for sharing some awesome personal stuff, and it's nice to get to know you all a little bit. Oh man, we're at time, okay, cool, we're gonna go ahead and take some questions, if you have questions. We also have one last game, so in the last 10 minutes, you feel like, actually, I'd rather play a game than ask questions, that's totally cool, too. You can throw that in the chat there, if you feel like it, but we have time to, to answer some questions about what we do, about any of the exercises, about legislative theater, about anything that you may be interested in.
And one thing I'd like to add with what Caitlin just did in the last exercise, is while you're thinking of questions, is the idea of empathy, when you're working with people, is, at times, you'll have something in common, surprisingly, with someone you wouldn't expect to have someone in common when you're coming up and working with people. And sometimes, you'll be the lone voice that shares that experience, but you're an important voice, because you are that voice in the room. And sometimes, finding that connection with someone else, or them finding it in you, is very important as well.
Any questions for us? We need Nathan here.
Guys, obviously, you know, if you have any questions, you can unmute yourselves. Or if you want to play a game, you can say game.
I'm in for a game.
Game.
Yay, let's play a game!
Alright, this one-
One of my favorites.
This one culminates everything we just did, alright, so, this is called Yes and a Story. In improv, the most important idea is this idea of yes and. It's the idea of like, we're saying yes to the reality, or what someone said to us, we also highlight their idea, we also say and. And then we add our own idea, there's a, an implied space after that, and that's the space that we put something in. So it's called Yes and Story, and what we're gonna be doing is, I'm gonna pull up the list, is, we're gonna go through the list, and we're gonna be creating a story, one sentence at a time. And I'll actually say like, the first line of the story, and then we're gonna go back just to the order that we had been going in. Cory, Jack, Natasha, if she's there, Katie, Kira, Terry, Valerie, Tina, and Kurt. And, and we're gonna go through it twice, can I hold on to it?
Oh, yeah.
And what we're gonna do is this, I'm gonna say the first line of the story, and then Cory, you're gonna say yes, just like we were doing in the object game, you're gonna say yes, you're gonna say it emphatically. You're also gonna repeat what I said, as best as possible, verbatim, even with tone and everything like that, would be amazing. Because you're gonna use the previous person's idea, you have to hear their idea, you have to listen to it. Then you're gonna say and, and I'm gonna be a stickler for this, if I don't hear you say yes, if I don't hear you say and, I'm gonna try to stop you, and, and make you say it, because it makes you slow down, it makes you focus on being present in the moment, because we're making it on the spot, and then you're gonna say the next part of the story. And to coach this a little bit, it's the, let the exercise do the work for you. Say yes, repeat what was said before you, say and, and then add the most natural next thing. It doesn't have to be crazy, it doesn't have to be weird, just whatever's natural, because we all have different ideas, it's gonna cause a laugh, it's gonna create something. We got laughs from doing superhero stances, and we all knew we were gonna do a superhero stance, and we still laughed at people when they did it. We didn't laugh at it, we laughed with them, because it was surprising, it was nice. And then the idea is that next person, they'll say yes, they will repeat whatever was added after the and. And then they will say and, and add the next thing. So we don't have to repeat the whole story, is what I'm clarifying, you don't have to repeat absolutely everything. Now, one thing we're gonna possibly hear, and I'm really gonna be looking out for, is, I don't wanna hear yes, repeat, and then but. The only time I like hearing buts is when it's a Sir Mix-a-Lot song from the 90s. Because what the but does is, it, yeah, it says no, and it contradicts everything that came before. And it's not actually using the idea, the and makes you use the idea. So if you're finding it difficult, you might be trying to take it to a place it doesn't wanna go, or you're trying to throw conflict in there that doesn't need to be in there, just do the yes and, so it's yes, repeat what came before you, and add the next detail, next person, yes, repeat as much as you can, as best as possible, and- Next person, yes, repeat as much as you can, as best as possible, and add the next detail. All right, Caitlin, can I get the title of the story? The made up story that doesn't exist.
Okay, it's gonna be called Troy's Adventure.
Troy's Adventure, this is our cat Troy.
He's been taking the class, too.
Yes, he's he's been on his mark underneath our feet the whole time here, all right, Troy's Adventure. Cory, the first line of Troy's Adventure is Troy woke up with a startle.
Yes, Troy woke up with a startle, and he looked out the window.
Excellent, Jack.
Yes, Troy looked out the window, and he could not believe what he saw.
Excellent, Katie.
Oh, Katie, just. Oh, here she is.
I'll go before I go, Troy looked out the window and couldn't believe what he saw, there was something with a big shadow.
There was something with a big shadow, excellent, Kira.
Yes, there was something with a big shadow, that was also making lots of noise.
Excellent, could you just do that again, just throw the word and in there, please?
Yep, yes, there's something with a big shadow, and it was making lots of noise.
Awesome, all right, Terry.
Yes, it was making a lot of noise, but it didn't scare.
Whoa, 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 there's a but right there, no buts, no buts, no, only ands, only ands.
Okay.
Repeat the and.
Okay, yes, it made a lot of noise, and it didn't scare anybody.
Excellent, Valerie.
Yes, it didn't scare anyone, and then it was quiet.
Excellent, Tina.
Yes, it was quiet, but suddenly.
Oh, oh, another but, another but right there. Let's throw an and, let's throw an and in there.
Yes, it was quiet. And suddenly, there was a big bang of a drum.
A big bang of a drum, ooh, excellent, Kurt.
Yes, suddenly, there was a big bang of a drum, and then the clown jumped out of the, out of the drum.
And the clown jumped out of the drum, excellent, Cory, bring her, bring it all home for us.
Yes, and then the clown jumped out of the drum, and started singing hallelujah.
Excellent, excellent, oh, right, we got a cat that wakes up with a start, there's a dark figure, a clown pops up and starts singing hallelujah, great job with that, great job with that. One thing I really wanna highlight there is the idea of the difference between and and but. And and makes us use the ideas of the people in the room with us, as well as, it makes us feel good when we're using the ideas. The but is a way of insulating ourselves, of not making ourselves vulnerable to what's going on. Because it can be scary to compromise and use other people's ideas, but that's actually, as Anthony said, that's just coming to an agreement, that's just finding agreement, and sometimes, it's always not the most comfortable thing, but it's something that brings in the whole room together. Cool, that is our time, definitely officially, thank you so much for having us, again, Action Tank, this is a blast, we absolutely love doing it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, you two are wonderful.
Oh, you stop.
Thank you, and thank you, everybody, for coming. Stay tuned to your email for a exit survey that we're gonna send out, and stay tuned for more night school sessions, have a great night.
Thanks.
Thanks, guys.